Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town of Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing for Monday, September 24th, 2018. When we get to the public hearings portion of the meeting, I will read the appeals into the minutes. The applicants then come to the table, tell us what they want, why they want it. If you are here for a variance, it is incumbent upon you to provide us with a hardship for which we would be able to grant that variance. If you're here for a special permit, the burden is not quite so high. It only needs to be less, it can't be more detrimental than what the existing conditions are. Some of us may or may not have some questions up here. And once we are done, I will open it up to the floor for anyone else that wishes to comment or have any questions. First order of business is bills. I have one bill for the legal notices for the August meeting to the TNG for $264. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve said bills?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes? Anyone have any questions, comments?
I defer to you on that one.
You need to sign this thing?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion on the minutes?
Move to accept the minutes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
For the minutes? I think it's just a click, but...
Oh, okay. Easy enough. Our first hearing is continued from August 27th, 2018, 26 Crosby Street. Peter Wynn, special permit? Just state your name for the record, please?
My name is Peter Wynn.
My name is Erin Phan. I'm the owner of the property.
Okay. And if I recall, the only thing that we were missing last time was the plan that let us know what area you were requesting. Yeah, actually, we already have it. Yeah. It's...
It's the same?
Yeah, it's the same. Yep. Okay. So it's going, so you're basically doubling the size, right? From 2414 to 5,075 square feet?
Yes.
Is what it is. Okay. Did we have plans? Did we know it?
Yeah, so I looked at the previous plans. We were looking, there was some addition to the, to the front and rear, and those are on the provided plans, and you can see that they're, the existing square foot, they essentially totaled 263 square feet.
Right.
So they've added that calculation in there for the board.
Okay, and the variance is just to increase the footprint beyond 50%? Okay. I'm good. Anyone have any questions?
No questions.
Lisa?
So the total area will be five, over 5,000 square feet, but we're increasing the footprint from 25, 35...
It's actually the living space, isn't it? Not the footprint?
So, so the existing single family will essentially have a slightly larger footprint, and then they are going up a second story.
Right.
So the, the variance is because it's increasing beyond the 50%.
Yep, so the footprint is increasing by 263 square feet.
Correct.
We're adding a second floor.
Right.
Making a total living area of 5,000.
Basically returning a ranch into a colonial.
Okay.
Yeah. You're okay? Anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this? Okay, there'll be no further questions or comments. We'll take it under advisement. You'll be notified of our decision.
Thank you, sir.
Our first new hearing is to hear the appeal of John and Marlene Campbell, 176 North Street, Shrewsbury, Mass., for a variance to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section V-F to allow a second dwelling unit on a single-family lot in the Residence A District upon property located at 176 North Street. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 12, Plot 004000. Welcome, please state your name for the record.
Thank you. John Campbell, 176 North Street.
Marlene Campbell, 176 North Street.
Okay.
Hello. We're the long-term owners of property at 176 North Street. We purchased it over 36 years ago in 1982. There's a small, one-bedroom cottage on the property and back. This rare house was here when we moved in in 1982. It was constructed 42 years ago in 1972, and it's been unchanged from its original construction. The original building permit was dated August 1972, but apparently the previous owner never requested a final inspection in a occupancy permit. At the time, we asked the previous owner to make sure the rare house was legal, and he told us it was. I went to the town assessor's office, and just before the purchase, I was told that records indicated it was a second house, and we were being taxed on it. We've been taxed ever since. The rare house has been listed as a cottage, if you look at this here, it's been listed as a cottage residential, and assessed as such for all the 36 years of owning the house. Our house in the second dwelling and back fit the neighborhood. There's never been any problems with this property at all, never been any issues at all. I guess the hardship is the town failed to close off the building permit from the previous owner. One thing I would add is, might be a pioneer for it, the Shrewsbury master plan of 2016 states to address the varied housing needs of Shrewsbury seniors and young adults, "Consider opportunities for zoning to encourage accessory dwellings, apartments of freestanding cottage structures that could address some senior housing needs and also provide housing options for young householders." So we're asking for a variance for this house, which probably should have been done by the previous owner 36 years ago, but we had no idea that was the case until very recently.
The original permit was issued for storage space and...
For residential purposes. It says a storage...
It says for a storage space. It doesn't say for...
It, it does say for residential purposes. I actually have a copy of it here.
I have a copy as well.
And it says erect two, two-car garage and storage for residential purposes.
Yeah, for the, for the house.
Okay.
Doesn't mean it's a second house.
Okay, I didn't know if that was an interpretation or what.
And frankly, I've been on this board for 20 years.
Yeah.
And my 20 years here, I've had one mandate from, from our appointing board, which is the Board of Selectmen. And their mandate has always been, don't put a second dwelling where one shouldn't be because of the schools, because of everything else. Don't put a front door where one doesn't qualify. It's, it's, I, I, I'm sympathetic in the sense that I agree with what's in the master plan, and I agree with what's in the, there's an act-in bylaw where, where it allows that by right. But until I get a public proclamation from the selectmen, that this is the type of development they want to encourage, I honestly don't know how we can vote, or I can vote, to approve it.
There's the fact that it's been there for so many 36 years.
If you were to come here for a new one...
Right.
You'd be turned down without question.
Yeah. We purchase it that way, not, you know...
I understand that, but the fact that it's been there for, there's no grandfathering just because it's been there without a permit. There is if you've had a building, but not for a use.
May I add?
You may.
So I, I feel for you. And I agree with everything you've said. The, the only thing I would take issue with is, you did say that really it was the previous owner who should have made sure everything was in order, and that is true, but as a new owner, it is on, it's our responsibility then to make sure everything's in order. So there was one comment you made that the town didn't see through the final permit process. We can't possibly go after every single permit like that. It's the owner who has to come back to the building inspector.
It was an open permit. I just thought that, you know, at some point that...
Somebody. You would think that would be...
You would think, yeah.
But unfortunately, it's the, the existing owner or new owner that needs to make sure everything's in order. I do feel, excuse me, feel for you that it's been assessed that way all this time. So I understand your predicament, but...
That, that comes up quite frequently in this type of situation, because there's no coordination between the White Department, who will put a second meter in, with the Building Inspector's Department and the Assessor. They don't coordinate. If there, if there's a second unit, the Assessor's going to bill it as a second unit, whether or not it's been permitted or not.
I have one more comment about the, as a new owner, making sure everything's in order and permitted. Chris, I have a question for you. If this were in 42 years ago, no, 36 years ago, when this couple purchased the property, if they had tried to make sure the permit was in order then, they would have had to have the property inspected, and what would it have entailed to have that up to code now? Ripping out walls to make sure everything was done correctly?
So I can't speak to that far back, as the codes are, were different then. I think if the board were to look favorably upon this application, they could include a condition that, because the Building Inspector has expressed that not seeing the inspection, that that work would have to be done to address potential life safety issues.
Additional work would, might need to be done on inspection of the property.
Correct. So, so that would, that would entail, there would be, from my understanding, pretty significant retrofits, you know, it would be opening walls to look at what work was done to make sure that it meets current codes, and it may be quite extensive, but if the applicant was willing to, to go through with that work, that may be an option to bring it up to, to current building standards.
I have more questions, sorry.
Go right ahead.
So it was permitted to be for storage and garage, but it is now livable? How so? Can you describe what it's...
You know, I just want to say that the house was built the way it was. It had a fireplace, a bathroom, and a kitchen in 1972. There was no question this was going to be a resident, residence and a house. He built it for his parents at the time, told us that's what he built it for. So there was no question. There's been no secrets on this. This has been out there in all the records, the town. I've had numerous inspections from the Building Department on our property, and I don't, I certainly will bring it up to court if it's required. It's probably up to court already, but I'll certainly do whatever's necessary. But this is always a house. This has always been a small, one-bedroom cottage and back. It wasn't converted from storage to a house. It was that way to begin with, having had any structural changes at all, and the town knew this all along.
Go ahead.
I would just say, so I think this is, this is not a unique case in the town. When looking at records that go so far back as, as to, you know, even potentially predating zoning, records are simply, are not always as clear as to what the intent was. I think in regards to zoning, the documentation that we have, I think it looks, from the documentation that was provided, that it was originally created as storage space and, and a garage, at some point that was converted into living space. Whether or not that was permitted, we don't have the documentation for that, so that doesn't mean that it...
Well, there's nothing reported.
Right, there's no, there's no documentation or record of it. And then it's been, since been used as an accessory apartment. I, I would note, you know, the longstanding use of this as livable space, as well as the, there are several emails that we've received since that were in favor of this. It, it does align with our master plan goals, so I would encourage the board to take that into account. But simply put, the zoning does not currently provide for that use, and we don't have the documentation necessary to grandfather that use. So...
In the best case, it would have been an in-law apartment.
I was just going to ask that. Is there another way to make this go away?
Yeah, but you can't rent it. It would have to be a blowing governance.
Right. So it's currently rented?
Yeah.
Okay. And what's really before us is all you want to do is construct a deck that's 30 feet from the ground.
No, 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 that's, that's...
Oh, I'm sorry, that was previous. I'm sorry. Okay, I see.
Yeah, so this is, it's, it's an existing, essentially, an existing non-conforming use. And he's looking to continue the use that is currently unpermitted. But I think, you know, him coming before the board to, you know, grant the relief is, is the right course of action, whether or not the board looks on it favorably.
Okay. Peter?
Yeah, I just have a couple. Just want to make sure I understand. So the, you bought it in 82, you said?
I'm sorry?
You bought the home in 1982?
1982, 30, over 36 years ago.
The seller represented to you at that time that it was permitted?
Yes, he did. And I went to the Assessor's office to ask, and he said, oh, yeah, it's a legal house, and you're being taxed on it. I remember she said...
Okay, so you checked with the Assessor?
Yes.
Did you go to the Building Department or no?
I, I didn't go to the Building Department. I was new at, you know, real estate and buying houses and...
Oh, sure.
Everything else, and of course, the records here say that it's a cottage residential, you know...
Right. So I wanted to ask about that. It says on the property card, "Old, old permit for conversion to living quarters was found." Did you, do you know what that refers to? Did you find that, or have you asked the Assessor's Office whether, what they're referring to in that mutation?
Not 100% sure.
Okay. Just, it'd be interesting if there was some permit somewhere that suggested, you know, in the historical record that it was permitted at some time. And you said it's currently rented?
Yes.
Is there parking for it that's there?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's private parking in back. No problems in the neighborhood at all. Everybody in the neighborhood knows...
That it's there and no complaints?
It's there and... I've had, I think, five or six or seven emails that have come to the board here, all in favor of it.
Right.
Actually, I have two, actually.
Who? I've got, I've got additional ones here.
I feel bad for Mr. and Mrs. Campbell, but I think somewhere along the line, someone didn't do their due diligence to clarify what this was on the property. So I don't know if you're blaming the town, the previous owner, but I think you, as a, someone who's purchasing the house, it was your responsibility to find out if that building was permitted.
Which we did through the Assessor's office, maybe the wrong office, and again, all the records say that it's a legal...
Like I said, there's plenty of places in town where the Assessor, I, we get this all the time.
I know, but as a neophyte, when you buy a house, when you're in your early 30s, do you, you know, the house was there, was complete, you know, ready to, you know, part of it, my...
When does the current lease run until?
She graduates, again, we've been renting to young people from Tufts Vet School for a number of years. My father-in-law lived in the house for the first five years till he passed away. The lease runs until she graduates in May.
In May? 2019? Okay.
I feel for you as well. I think Mr. Goldrick said that this is probably not a unique situation. I own an old home myself, so you're making me think that I probably didn't do due diligence as well, because I bought my house in 86. But I guess the, the bigger question is if, if there isn't an avenue for what you're looking for now, what, what would be the course of action that can be gone down to remedy the situation?
Right, so I, I think in regards to, you know, a kind of due diligence that, that keeps coming up, I think this is a representative, representation of an owner that is currently doing due diligence in this case. These do frequently come up, and the fact that he's come before the board to, to remedy that, I think, says something. I also think that in, in regards to options moving forward, you know, if the, the board granted that relief, he would be able to, to use it. Otherwise, the unit would have to be rendered not a dwelling unit. That would be more of a building code issue of how that is addressed, and convert it back to, you know, the storage space that was originally permitted and use that way. And so I, I do think this is somewhat of a unique case of, you know, a, a piece of property that has evolved over the years. I think it is in search of the highest and best use of the property.
But it isn't allowed in that zone.
But it is not currently allowed.
Let's make that clear. And again, that's why we're asking for a variance.
Right. Anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this? Stating in for the record?
Yari Delisandro. I live at 133 North Street. I'm the neighbor diagonally across the street from the Campbells. Bought my house and moved in in 1989. I've known the Campbells since then. I've known the building has been there since then. I only know it's been there because they showed it to me. You can't see it from the street. I understand it's been rented almost nonstop in all those years. I never see anybody come. I never see anybody go. I never hear any noise, any nuisance. Seems almost unoccupied to me. I don't know where you get tenants like this. I never had, I never had tenants like that when I rented our property. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know that in all the years I've lived there, it's nev, it's never been a problem. It's been almost a blessing to the neighborhood to get some younger people in there, some students. I've met some of the tenants that have been there socially and, you know, great kids trying to make their way through. Most of them are from the veterinary school. They just kind of keep hanging it down, handing it down somehow. But anyway, I just wanted to say that, you know, responsible people and responsible tenants, I think it's great for the neighborhood myself.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
State your name for the record, please.
My name is Dave Govey. I'm at 169 North Street, directly, directly opposite the property, actually directly opposite the dwelling in question. You can't even see it from the street. There's never any noise that comes out of this property whatsoever. John and Marlene are great, great neighbors, basically stellar community people, and I just want to know that my wife and I both support John's variance, and hopefully the board can see through it, allowing him a variance for his property.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Anyone else up here? Okay, there'll be no further questions or comments. We'll take it under advisement.
Thank you.
Our next 6:30 hearing is to hear the appeal of Imran Kusro, 182 Jenkins Road, for a variance to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section 7, Table 2, to create a single-family lot with no frontage in the Residence A District upon property located at 115 R Colonial Drive. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 02, Plot 003000. Welcome, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Azza Muhammad, and I'm representing Mr. Imran Kusro. This said variance was actually awarded for the frontage within a specific timeframe. Mr. Kusro, he couldn't finish it, but within the timeframe, and the time was expired. So we are just here to request to re-improve the same variance, and with a new timeframe so that we can go and finish it.
When this was here last time, it was represented that Mr. Kusro's son was going to be living in the house?
No.
That's what was represented last time? That was one of the reasons why the variance was granted last time?
Okay. So he didn't tell me anything about it.
Okay.
He asked me to just go for it. I said, okay, I will go and request the town like that.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Are there any additional plans?
No, I think it's just a total, just from the same as last time.
Yeah.
Anything? Anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this issue? Okay, there'll be no further questions or comments. We'll take it under advisement. You'll be notified of our decision.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Third is to hear the appeal of Roberta Martin, 36 Washburn Street, Worcester, Mass., for a variance and special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section 4-B to rebuild and reconstruct a non-conforming, single-family dwelling in the Residence B2 District upon property located at 17 Connaught Drive. The subject premise is on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 51, Plot 052000. Welcome, and please state your names for the record.
I'm Roberta Martin.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Richard Ricker. I'm attorney of law on 11 Maple Avenue, and I'm here representing the petitioner. This is a request that changed a little bit since, since it was filed. When it was initially filed, the Building Inspector and I were talking about a variance. In subsequent discussions, she informed me that she, she felt there was a variance and/or a special permit, one or the other. I think that what we're really asking for here is a special permit. The fact is that you have an existing building on the site. You have, you have elevations in your file.
Yep.
The, you also have a platform in your file, which, I don't have a blown-up platform, but this is the existing footprint of the property, but for the, the small bumpout right here on the street side. That bumpout is still within, outside of the setback, so it doesn't add any new mud to the structure. The structure being a pre-existing, non-conforming structure that Roberta is looking, Roberta and her husband are looking to basically totally renovate from the top to bottom, as you can see from the five pages of plans that were filed, which I hope you all have in mind. Renovation involves basically from the bottom up. I frankly asked Roberta, how come she's not knocking this thing down? I frankly asked Roberta, how come she's not knocking this thing down and just building it new? But that's not the case.
Is there, is there an effective difference, you are pretty much knocking it down?
No, there really isn't.
No?
Really isn't a, a lot of difference, there's some, I mean, there's a cost difference, of course.
Right.
Some of us think that it costs more, some of us think it costs less, and that's a debate, I guess, that will go on forever.
Right.
The fact is that it is a extensive renovation of a prior non-conforming structure. You're, you're utilizing basically the same footprint. I know there's some, some discussion with the building department about the deck, and I would suggest to you, I saw some pictures that Ms. Sheen may have given to you as well. But the fact is that the deck was taken off sometime in two thousand sixteen, it appears to be the case. She sent a photo to us showing in October of two thousand sixteen that the deck was, was down. The footings are still there, I've, I've been out there and I've looked at the structure myself, walked around it, and the footings are still there. But in any event, that deck that is being requested here does not extend, or does not cause any new non-conformity. So, under the case laws that we've talked about before, the Gale case, the Dietrich case, and, and the other cases.
This would be special permit.
This would be a special permit.
Do you agree?
I agree, so the, the increase is mainly just the, the deck portion and that front alcove, which is not greater than fifty percent. Other than that, it's a complete rebuild of the existing.
With the existing footprint.
Existing footprint.
Okay.
The difference in plans between the filing date and now would be two, two basic factors. One is that they would like to have a privacy fence of sorts on their decks, extending out on their decks. We've spoken with the neighbor immediately next door, as recently as, as ten minutes ago on the phone, and he stated that he didn't, he doesn't have any issue with that. His, his house is a, a house that was also subject to your review a few years ago, and he built a pretty big modern structure there. His decks happen to be actually higher than what these decks would be, and he's, he also has two decks on, on the lakeside of his new home. The other change would be an interior change, which has to do with bathroom configuration.
Which does affect us, yeah.
I just wanted to let you know that, that, that there, there are those minor changes to the plan that we did file at the time of the application. And also, on the lakeside, there would be one additional transit window. You see these transit windows here?
Yep.
Your plans, I don't think you have all, all five of them, I think you may have four. So, that's basically it, it, it's a rebuilding, renovation, extreme as it may be, but that's what it is, and if it walks like a duck.
Is it, um, it, it was the existing structure same size, pretty much the same size?
Exactly the same size.
It is exactly the same size, in fact, they're using.
But even the, the up and down?
Yes. Yeah, the, although you see three levels there.
Yep.
There are three levels down.
Okay.
The, that upper level is street, is street level.
Okay.
And, and it's a, it's a very extreme drop.
Drop to the lake, yeah, okay. Any questions, anyone?
Hi. I have a comment, I, this looks really.
And the roof, and if I, if I could just say, from the existing structure, the roof line obviously goes up a little bit, it's going to be peaked a little bit more than what the present roof line is, because there was a, a temporary fix that was put on this, this building at previous time.
So the snow would fall off it, it was a flat roof in the front before.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say.
I have really no issue with this, it looks really nice, I really appreciate how you're keeping the front elevation the same, sticking within your footprint. A little flag went up for me, though, when you mentioned the privacy railing, fencing, or decking, railing on the deck.
Right.
And when was that change made? I'm just worried, Mr. Chairman, about a butters realizing this change, the two properties on either side of this dwelling may have obstructed view that they didn't have before, and I know you just mentioned you talked to one of them.
The privacy fence is only on one side, ma'am.
On one side?
And it's on the, the side of the Bonaventura side.
So it's on the left side.
Bonaventura side.
Okay.
And you represented that you spoke to them?
Yes, I actually spoke to them too, as well.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this? There'll be no further, anyone up here have any other questions? Nope, okay, no further questions or comments, we'll take it under advisement, and you will be notified of our decision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to number these, thank you.
Does this set a plan, since it, since it has the presentation set?
Do we need that?
Because of the change of the.
With the privacy fence?
Yeah, we should have it, yeah.
Submit it as a PDF to me, is that?
Okay, I'll do that tomorrow, okay.
That'll be the easiest, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Number one is.
A continued hearing?
The continued hearing, yeah, I can't find my agenda. Thank you. Twenty-six Crosby Street. Questions, comments, discussion?
I don't have any issue, I don't see it as more non-conforming setbacks, it's within the.
Yeah.
So I don't have an issue.
You're all good? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Next. Uh, one seven six Horse Street. Who wants to start the discussion?
I feel bad for the Mr. and Mrs. Campbell. But like I mentioned before, somewhere along the line, it wasn't clear what the building was used for. And what it's being used for right now was not allowed in that zone. That's my only comment.
I find the look at this, if this were coming to us as a new one, it would definitely not be in it, it would be, there'd be no debate. And I don't know the fact.
Can you, can you explain that to me again?
If someone were coming to us that they wanted to put a second unit on a lot.
Building on that, yep.
You know, like I said, the mandate that I feel like I've had from the selectmen over the last twenty years is you don't put front doors where one can't fit, or where one's not zoned. So I don't know, the fact that it has been there, I don't know is enough of a reason for me. It's already, it would.
I get it.
Doesn't fit the mandate. Like I said, I, I would be in favor of the type of care, of the development, per the master plan, but until I get a majority of selectmen coming out publicly and saying this is the type of development that they have proven want to see going forward, just in terms of how many more applications are we going to get?
So to me, the, um, the zoning would have to be changed.
Correct.
So regardless of.
I'm also not big on use variances to begin with.
Go ahead.
If I may, if I may, I think in this case, it's, it's somewhat unique that we have a large public support for this. I, I think this application more so than some of the other situations that we've seen this being.
I know which one's on its own.
I think that it is a unique case that.
But it's still not allowed in the zone.
Correct, and, and I think.
And that's what the bylaws states.
I think what the, the decision for the board tonight in this particular matter is a question of, in this case, is the zoning essentially what a, what a variance is looking for? Is it an undue hardship on the appellant? And I think in this case, with the, the public support that's come out, the fact that it is aligned with master plan goals, I, I think we need to look at potentially that, in this case, the zoning as a living document may not be right for this particular person.
So I agree with that, because if we were, if we were presented with this without the master plan, changes that are coming.
Forget about without the master, but even without the, even with the master plan, if this were presented as a new building, how would you vote?
Today.
Today.
So, that's a distinction, that I, because the, we have support in the living document that's being created right now, master plan, and we have to go through the process to get it through town meeting and approved as a zoning change, it's.
I, I haven't seen anyone take the lead, either from your board or from the selectmen, to say this is the type of development they want to encourage, let's put a zoning change in.
Even though it's in the master plan.
Even though it's in the master plan, I have not seen that happen.
You need that additional.
Absolutely.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
I struggle with this one, I think there's something to be said on both sides, I certainly feel.
Oh, I feel, I, I do, I, I, like I said, I, I agree with the master plan.
Oh, right.
I, I think that type of.
Sure, in the sense that, you know, it sounds as though the seller misrepresented to them what the status was of the dwelling, and it sounds as though they tried to go to the town and verify, and happened to go to the wrong department, as a recent first-time homebuyer myself, I can sympathize with that. And were given information that wasn't correct, the property card appears not to be correct also. And also, you paid taxes on a dwelling for, you know, a number of years that would otherwise maybe have been taxed differently. The flip side of that is you also maybe collected rents, you know, for all those years that you weren't supposed to collect.
Yes.
I think another piece that we haven't discussed, and the piece that sort of concerns me the most, is that there's a current tenant there until the end of May. And so I wonder where we're in this sort of.
I, I would say.
This, yeah, we're in a sort of no man's land period here, where we have the master plan saying we'd like to go in this direction, but we don't actually have authority yet, we don't actually have bylaws that say to do that.
I would put a condition, it can go till May.
I would say that seems like a happy medium, we're not disrupting this young person's life, she can finish school and not have to worry about finding an apartment. And if it turns out that we go in that direction, it seems like we are going in that direction, like apply again, and get a permit at that time. That would be, that would be what I think is a way to sort of split the.
And I agree with a lot of what you said, but I also have to balance the fact that we've had multiple decades of proven history that this particular use is not detrimental to the neighborhood. It is in line with what we're trying to do in terms of a community to have affordable housing, wherever we can find it. I don't think that we're going to have a run of applicants coming, but each one will have their own merits that they have to bring forward, we're not making precedent here. So I think it's really just aligning or righting a ship that everyone, from what I'm reading over here, thought we were on the right page, and then, for whatever reason, it was discovered that there was a problem. And, and it had, I mean, you tell me, if he had not gone for a permit for a deck, this would not have been discovered, and maybe the next, and maybe the next person.
No, it's not, no, it's for a permit, it's for an A and R, it's for an A and R to sell what?
So, for this particular case, I sympathize with the owner. I think the proven use and demonstrated commitment, well, not commitment, comments from, from the surrounding neighbors supports that this one, I think, is something that we should consider to pass.
Any other discussion?
No.
I'm just going to throw out a funny comment, I guess. I have a completely within right allowable permitted extra room on my garage, and my son's probably a real nuisance to all my neighbors. So I, it's, I just find that comical, that.
It's an in-law party?
Uh, well, they have, they have a dwelling on their property, it does not contribute any type of nuisance whatsoever to the property, and I think that should be considered as well.
Motion.
It's a tough one.
I move to temporarily accept it until the, is it the end of May that she's graduating?
No, no, well.
Okay, yeah, let's discuss.
No, so, so, that would be, no, it would, it would be a denial.
A denial with conditions.
A denial with conditions, oh, that they can stay until.
With the conditions, it can be, it can stay until the lease is up.
Okay, so I moved to deny with the condition that the current tenant can stay until the lease is up, with the building inspector's approval, maybe for safety reasons, can you do that?
And I'd like more discussion, sorry, you're gonna have to say all that again. So, if we were to deny, for now, the appellant would, uh, could, with lots of help from others, try to get the zoning changed. And from May until that happens, not receive any rent, cannot use it as a dwelling, and should the zoning be changed, could it then come before us again to?
I guess the question I would have is if it's an allowed, if it is, if the zoning is changed to an allowed use, and there's a denial here, would that still have a two-year window?
So, my understanding is if, if the zoning was changed, and it was a by right use,
Yeah.
that no additional relief would be needed if it was a special.
So the denial wouldn't matter.
If it was a special permit use, or still a, a variance, obviously would have to meet the same criteria if it was made to a special permit use. I believe that may be a substantially different application so that the board could hear it. But I would just suggest that, you know, zoning changes are not, you know, even, even with the master plan.
Oh, they could take years, or never.
It's typically a significant effort before it comes to fruition, so. And so, and so that's why I think in this case, that is potentially an option, but I think we wanted to give the opportunity to, for the board to review that potentially in this case, in this specific instance, our zoning is dated.
But it is what it is also.
It is what it is, yeah.
So, that's the part that I'm stuck on.
So I'll be crazy and throw out a motion to approve the variance as.
I already submitted mine, I get to go first.
Oh, okay. So this is when it gets complicated, go ahead.
So I, I move to deny without prejudice, with the condition that the current tenant can remain through the end of May twenty nineteen. I said that adequately.
I'd second that.
Okay. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So. So with that motion failing, we would move on to, the board would still need to make a decision on that. So the, so the motion to.
Deny.
The motion to deny was approved.
Was approved.
Right, that's what just happened.
Yeah.
So, it's been denied.
Right. Okay. So the question is on the vote sheets?
Yeah, so this, we have a blank vote sheet, so I'll write in.
So am I changing this to? This says to allow, yeah.
Inverted?
So, so I'm changing the allow to deny. A second dwelling.
Or you can make the three of you oppose, and we.
Well, no, so I just put to deny a second dwelling.
Okay.
With conditions.
With conditions.
With conditions, yeah. Colonial Drive, one fifteen R. I, I'll put it right out, I'm opposed to this one too, it was originally, it was originally not in law, so it was, it was put in that he was going to do it with a son, and that, that is no longer the condition.
Having not been here for the first time, I'm not super clear on exactly.
Okay, so, so it's, it's a, a lot off of Colonial Drive with no frontage.
Right, I know that part.
It was taken, the frontage was taken away by two ninety. And they, they have a right to be able to construct your driveway, to access it. I believe that's in, is that what it is, a driveway?
Correct, yeah, so the, essentially it's in a driveway easement that goes through some existing property.
Right.
Right.
Which was granted, or essentially created with.
By the state, I think.
By the state with the creation of two ninety.
Well, they have a driveway, yeah.
Right, but, but when, he came before us last time, he represented that he was building it, he, it, it, it was, the second house was going to be for a family member.
Okay, so there's an existing house.
That was the way I voted for it. That was the way I voted for it. I can't speak for anybody else.
We don't have the, um,
Does this have any decision?
The written approval on, on us here this evening? It was back in August of two thousand sixteen, which I don't think the, um-
I believe I included it in the-
Okay. Can I? Yes, with the wording of, let me see if I can get back to two thousand sixteen.
I did include, um, I did also include in the, the comment letter, um, the three conditions that were previously, connected with this approval. I can review those if, uh, the board would like.
Uh, no further subdivision or building. The proposed driveway shall be reduced in width to twelve feet. And the proposed grading around the building shall be in accordance with what is shown on the plan.
So I, nothing was said to, unless you have something on record that, that has changed. It's, um, I would, I would feel like I want to go back and look at how it was written.
I, here, it's right here.
Well, that's the notes.
No, this is the-
Decision comment.
This is the decision, right here.
I'm uncomfortable with the whole thing anyway, but just, um.
So there's an existing dwelling, it just doesn't show up on here?
No, it's not there. There's one, oh, there is one dwelling there already.
Okay, so it's just not on the-
Right. Correct, there is one dwelling?
Uh, no, so-
Or is it no dwelling?
There's nothing on it.
I think there's no dwelling.
Okay.
There isn't. That's a problem. There isn't.
This is to build a dwelling at the beginning.
There isn't, so I'm very uncomfortable not knowing what's really going to go there and-
Well, he just wants to put in what was, what we approved before, which was to allow a second dwelling.
And that's what I want to say, the August, uh-
The second dwelling or first one?
Twenty-nine, two thousand sixteen.
The second dwelling. He, he has rights to put the first one in.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
He was putting a second one in for his son.
And it was going, okay, so that would be an in-law or that would be just a second?
Another second dwelling.
Just a second house.
On one lot.
Yeah.
So what's the-
It's not true.
No, so, so this is, um, the relief that's requested is for, um, a lot that has no frontage.
Right.
So this is to gain-
Was there a second, was it?
This is just to build the first one.
No, so, so it's just-
Just to build the first one?
It's, it's, the, um, the request is to, um, essentially release a building permit on a lot that has no frontage due to the, um, driveway, um, easement. There would be access through the driveway easement.
Right, and so your proposed condition was to not allow subdivision. In other words, there should not be a dwelling
Right, correct.
And then maybe they could apply to have a second dwelling at some other time?
So-
No, you want to further subdivision. I don't know why I thought it was a second house.
So there's no second house?
No, so-
They, they came before us about that another time.
They did.
And then this, the, the one we actually approved-
Wait, they came before us?
Before August.
For, for a second house?
Showing us some, showing us plans with more than one structure and we denied that. That's what I recall.
You don't have any of that in your records?
Sorry, so the, the, the application is, it's the, the same application that was provided previously and it's for essentially one single family.
Well, here it goes. Okay, a variance for the subject property was granted.
Yes.
On August?
So, so the, uh, maybe this is-
Twenty-nine, that is right. And nothing has changed in that application from what I saw.
Correct, so, so that, that variance application-
I want to see what that variance is.
So, so that, we can-
Because he had a right to build a house there, I thought.
So he, he did until, so since that variance was not acted upon, the construction has not begun. Those decisions expire as a variance with one year, a special permit, two years.
But what was the variance?
The special, the variance application is the same as that.
What was the variance?
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to see the written, what we-
Just to build a house. On a place with no frontage.
Right.
Okay, so just the one house.
Can we get the file?
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful. That's what I was trying to get at.
Did you think it was?
I thought it was.
The second?
Yeah, that's what I thought it was. But didn't we give him a right to go over people's property?
No, no, they have that driveway. They have, he had the right, he had the right by taking to put the driveway in. And what we did was we restricted the size of said driveway.
The driveway, right.
Is one of our conditions.
That's the twelve foot?
Yeah.
Yep.
Sorry, yeah.
And the reason for narrowing it was just that it's going through?
Just the, the, the neighbors.
Okay.
While Chris is looking for that, did we take in any issue with the fact that nothing's been done?
Well, no, that's what they have to-
We extended it for six months to begin.
They didn't, we never extended it. That was the thing. They never came to us for an extension.
That expires.
So it's just like-
So, so it just lapsed. The one year elapsed.
Right, and they're coming back to?
For the exact same thing.
Yeah, I know.
Right. I don't know why I thought it was a second.
I think he used his son as the excuse for building the house there. And I think he already listened, Mary, doesn't he?
Can't answer that question.
Mr. Chairman, did you open, did you open that up, that, this hearing when their representative was here? Did you open it up for public comment?
Yeah. Tonight?
I don't know.
Yeah, and, and there was none.
There's none. There's a structure there, right?
No.
Okay.
No.
I forgot where the driveway comes in.
It came down basically.
Oh, yeah, it stands there. You're right, that's it, yeah.
So where's the driveway?
From his side business, Mr. Judge.
Right, yeah, I mean, I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember we app-
Yeah, so, so the previous, uh, variance that was granted was for, uh, section seven, table two, which is our dimensional regulations in regards to frontage.
Right.
Okay, so it's just the frontage question again?
So it's just one, one house?
Correct, yeah, so it's the-
I got the second one from, okay.
I believe, I believe on anything, I believe on, there may be, um, so, looking at those plans, the question maybe there was, there is a house existing in front. And there was-
On one?
On, on the plans that were provided, there's-
On one fifteen R?
Yes, um, no, no, as a, as a separate lot, there is a, there's a structure in front.
Okay.
Um, and there was discussion of whether the access would be through the, the granted easement or whether it would be through, I believe, the, the owned property.
Oh, I see. Do you remember which one that was? I guess it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, yeah, I don't think it matters.
So to me, nothing has changed, so-
Yeah, so in, in that case, I, I thought it was the second one. I don't have an issue with it, no.
Okay.
Okay.
So I, uh, moved to approve.
Yeah, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Okay. That was much to do about, okay. Uh, last but not least, um, seventeen Connor Drive.
I have no issue.
I have no issues.
I don't think I do either.
Okay, I like that kind of discussion. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Did I put it in the front? No, probably not. Now I'll put it in the front.
Good night, thank you.
Since you're all done deliberating, that, that came up twice. First, first attempt was for two houses.
Yes.
And then the second attempt was for one house.
Okay, okay. I knew I had it in my head somewhere, yeah.
Easement was granted by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in order to, in order to grant them access to build on that property.
Okay.
As a result of two ninety taken away all the-
Thank you.
Yes, he has things.
Good night.
I'm not totally-
It's really denied the two house?
Yes.
And then it came back as this one down?
Six Crosby, there's the-
There are two vote sheets on plain six Crosby. Did you see that?
Which one's twenty-two?
No, I didn't see that.
That was the first one. The continued, Jeremy? Is that continuing?
Wait, but it should be, two was because one's a variance, right?
The, the special permit.
Yeah. Okay.
Increase beyond a fifty percent.
I'm usually pretty good at that.
Right.
So, uh, one seven six North Street was denied at point of three to two vote. One fifteen R Colonial Drive was approved unanimously.
Just one on this.
Which letter?
I have a charge.
Yep. Crosby Street, twenty-six Crosby, variance and special permit, uh, to increase the footprint and to remove and to construct a second floor and non-conforming has been unanimously approved. And seventeen Connor Drive, uh, this has variance of, it's a special permit, he said.
Correct, so it was, um, essentially advertises both to the board flexibility.
Do we need to deny the variance or no? Just withdraw it, I guess.
Right.
Okay, uh, new business. We have a, the calendar for next year. Anyone have any problems? Anyone taking vacations? Who makes plans that far in advance? Not me. Okay, uh, can I get a motion that we accept this?
Yeah, move to accept.
Second, someone? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, book the room. Okay. Uh, new business, or no, correspondence. I got a letter here from a Mr. Robert Gerard of seventeen Eaton Place. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the letter, I'll read most of it. The letter is in response to the approval of a variance at fifteen Eaton Place, which is next door to where he is, uh, to the Goffins to construct a garage twenty-five point three feet from the front and two point nine feet from the side property line, which I believe was at our last meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, and he says right here, while he did agree to allow the Goffins to construct a garage addition, it has to be understood that it doesn't, no way allow the Goffins to violate his property, but that's really just an issue between two of them. It really doesn't affect the board. Then he further goes on to say, uh, he's a little concerned about the board's decisions to require plantings. As far as I was concerned, we did that to afford him privacy. Again, I don't really see that as an issue for us. Then his other concern is, uh, access, if it's so close, these are things that he probably should have said before the meeting and not after, before he said he agreed with their variance.
As a concern.
Yeah.
So-
So I, I thought, you know, I, I thought one of the questions that we asked was, did they speak to their neighbors? And they said yes.
Right.
And he actually admits that they did speak to the neighbors.
So I think there's just some confusion about how the process works.
Yeah.
So, um, he, he's concerned that they're going to violate the property line and there is no property line violation happening. Property line stays in play.
Well, I think he's concerned that if they do the construction, is the construction equipment going to cross over?
Onto his property.
Onto his property, but that, that's not a matter for us, right, so.
True, but the property line is the property line.
Right.
And I guess, um-
He's two point nine feet off it.
The two point nine feet off, that is tough to get plantings in that don't encroach on the other property. That is, that's tough, that maturity, to be three feet.
A lot of maintenance to them.
Yeah.
If he was amenable to a fence instead, that's fine, but he could pay for that expense, I guess.
It's actually, we already made the decision, we've already put it in, it's not full academic, yeah.
I think his concern was mostly like you had mentioned about the construction, the client damage.
But that's not our issue.
No.
I would, yeah, I would suggest, uh, that the, the concerns that are, are given, um, you know, there was, do notice, do notice given at the hearing.
Frankly, those concerns that are given, he should have been here at the meeting.
And, and I think, um, moving forward in this one, if, if there is an issue, again, as you, as stated, it's between two parties whether or not, you know, they opt, you know, plantings to go for a fence or some other, um-
So as stated, we, there was conditions and we want the appellant to plant, plant something there.
Right.
If however they agree between them that they don't want any plantings, what does the appellant have to do?
It's, it's a decision. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's in the decision.
If, um-
In which we thought we were doing to benefit-
I know, I know.
Yeah, not anymore.
Oh, yeah, it's expired, yeah.
Well, so I guess it's an opportunity to say, encourage people to come and be heard.
Exactly.
Right, absolutely.
Come before the meeting or send a letter before the meeting.
Absolutely, Peter.
And I would say in regards to this case, um, if it is an issue, um, and it becomes an issue between two parties, they should discuss a solution that's amenable to both of them.
Right.
Um, and then they could, uh, request a reconsideration, uh, or an amendment to the decision, um, which the board-
Well, that's nice.
Would come forward, the board as new business.
I know in the planning board, that would fall under like a de minimis change, right? It's not a full hearing, it's, it's a minor change.
A field change in this case perhaps, yeah.
So could we, uh, do we just stay out of it or could we explain that to the appellant that a, a change could be made?
At this point, I, I would recommend no action. I think, um, if it does become an issue, um, sure, one of our departments will hear about it.
Absolutely.
And at that time, we'll, we'll move forward.
Had his opportunity to come to the hearing or write a letter prior to the hearing.
Right, right.
And he was notified, so.
And as Peter just eloquently said, I would encourage people who are watching this. If a neighbor of yours does put an application in, it would be who view to either contact us or the building inspector prior to the meeting or show up at the meeting to address your concerns. After the fact, it's usually set in stone unless you're going to legally appeal it.
Our hands are sort of tied at this point.
So that was nice for the benefit of our viewers.
Yeah. Uh, can I get another motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.